I'm Clay Clay Jesus, President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, in the great routine of justice and law.
Yes, Councilman McCloud, you can say that if case for.
I aspire here as most gracious and everlasting father, just one more again, we come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We just thank you for this blessing us and keeping us as one body here's Christ. We ask you to bless everybody here individually and collectively. Bless this council that every decision we make be for the better of the Dillen County. All this we asking your son Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Three, approval of agenda requires a motion. Make that motion. Motion is that, cut motion in a second. Discussion, all in favor. Four, approval of minutes, two one nineteen call, five twenty-two nineteen regular, six four nineteen call, requires a motion.
If motion would approve minutes, they stay.
Motion in a second.
I'll take it.
Motion in a second, in discussion, all in favor, anybody. Five, new business, A, recognition of.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just recently, I went and visited Fire Station Three. And when I went and visited Fire Station Three, I met, or I actually reconnected with, a long time servant of Dillon County Fire Department. He's the daddy, he's been over twenty years, right? Right, twenty years. And I learned about his little girl who just recently was diagnosed with a rare form of brain cancer, brain tumor. And, and he told me about how, how much she liked to enjoy her life, and how much she actually fought in his fighting, and not just giving up. And I wanted to present her a Medal of Courage on behalf of Dillon County, to help encourage her to continue to fight, and continue to be an inspiration to all of us. And it reads Dillon County Medal of Courage presented to Kendall Brook Brown, a recognition for your courage and fighting spirit. Thank you for being an inspiration to all of us, July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
Five B, Suckahatchee Camp, Michigan.
Do we have anyone from, okay, here you go. If you would come up. Yeah. I also want to present a Dillon County Community Service Award. We have a group from, what do you call it, Suckahatchee Camp or the Harvest Camp. And they come to Dillon County, they've been doing it for quite some time now.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, they've been coming to Dillon County, and they help with homes of those who need assistance, and they help. And it's a camp of eighth graders, seventh graders.
Oh, we have fourteen years old.
Okay, right. And so they, they come and they, they do a lot of service in Dillon County by helping us, or helping some of the citizens, most of some of the elderly who have had problems with their homes damaged through storms and that kind of thing. And, you know, this kind of community service is what we're all here for, what we're all about. We wanted to give community service awards. And read Dillon County Community Service Award presented to Harvest Camp, for your willingness to lend a helping hand to those in need. We are forever grateful for your assistance. Now, I want to hear to be able to say a couple of words about what they do.
Diane Griswold is the camp director, so he's going to say a few words.
Well, I appreciate y'all recognizing us. We've been here for about twelve years, and we've almost finished one hundred homes in the county. Last year, we had about eighty-five campers that came out from Massachusetts, from Georgia, and all around South Carolina. And we just, we get just as blessed as the homeowners that we work with. Suckahatchee started forty-one years ago with one home in the heart of South Carolina near the Suckahatchee River, if you wondered where the name came from. And now we have about two thousand campers every summer. And we're originally associated with the United Methodist Church. But here in Dillon County, we now have all the different churches supporting us, from the Church of God and to the Open North Community, all the different churches help us with meals and make sure that we're able to do this camp. So, we're really in debt, really to a few hundred people every year from across this community. And so we're thankful that y'all allow us to do this every single year. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate Mr. McCloud's invitation to come to that.
Amen, thank you.
We appreciate very much.
Five C, Dr. Kyle Wagner, President of N E T C.
Well, I'd like to introduce Jamie Thomas. He's our new psych director here in Dillon, and he's already hit the ground running. And he's been with us for a school or a month. He put in more work orders to have worked on the campus than we've had put in in probably about three years. He comes from us from higher education. He's worked as a register's office, student enrollment, financial aid. And he ran the Coker College Campus in Marion, South Carolina. And then he's came to Northeastern Technical College to run our Dillon campus. So, we're very fortunate to have him on staff. And like I said, I think you'll see him a lot around the region, working with getting the campus recognition into the community. Jamie will be passing out a little information for you guys. I'm not going to go through the whole presentation, but I gave you a pretty in-depth one there that talks about a lot more than what I'm going to talk about. But Northeastern Technical College, I could spend an hour talking about everything we're doing here in Dillon County, because we're doing a lot of stuff. The, and I don't know if you know this, but we've done a little bit of demographics there. But the big one we wanted to focus on, and I want to talk to you in the slideshow there, it talks about careers. And we broke down the industries in Dillon County by age groups. And what we found was, was if students are under the age of twenty-five, the majority of their jobs, matter of fact, is a total of about two-hundred and fifty work in retail trades, and about another four-hundred, almost five-hundred, work in accommodations in hotels and those kind of services. And we really want to talk about what we're trying to do as a college to get the unders, the more skill set to that age group, and drive them into careers that are right here in Dillon County. One of the examples is manufacturing and transportation. In manufacturing and transportation, which you have huge impact with industries in this area, for students under the age of twenty-five, you have about less than three-hundred students, three-hundred people in that age group working in those industries. So, one of the big things that we're doing at the Dillon campus now is we're really drilling in on getting students under twenty-five, engaged in college, and working with the local industry to identify internships and inter-level skills through a program we call Career Connect. Career Connect here in Dillon County has driven our enrollment since we introduced it. There's a slide there, it's called Traditional Student Enrollment. Right here, you can see it's a four-year trend. In two thousand fifteen, we had between fall, spring, and summer, we had less than thirty students attending school here in Dillon. As of this year, we had over a hundred and eighty in those programs. So, quite a bit of growth in less than four years. The dual enrollment is one we're really excited about. One of the things that we've learned is if we engage with students while they're still in high school, we have a better opportunity of building them into skilled workers in the future. Our dual enrollment program in two thousand fifteen, that was the year prior to becoming, we had one student. Yeah. This year, between fall, spring, and summer, unduplicated, we had a total of two-hundred and forty-five students participate in dual enrollment. And I want to talk to you a little bit about that because we're super excited about that. Dual enrollment in Dillon has been funded through the lottery. And we now have a new funding source called S E Wins. And the lottery allows us to pay up to six-hundred dollars, a hundred dollars per credit hour this year increased, to go against their tuition. Also, we have a new program called S E Wins, in which all the students qualify for an additional fifty dollars. And the school district has been very gracious, and they award a one mill to the college of about seventy-one thousand dollars. We use that money for one-hundred percent scholarships to help students that can't cover their classes with that mill. So, that mill plus the lottery and the S E Wins project pays for all students that can't qualify for Pell. The Northeastern Technical College is the only college, there's only one college, forty-four colleges nationwide, forty-four nationwide, that's not even one per state, got the Experimental Dual Enrollment Pell, and we were one of those colleges. Which means now the students can qualify for Pell while they're still a high school student. We're the only one in South Carolina that got that. We rolled that out, we're what we call a fast-foot-first college, and the high school has worked with us, and we have that program rolled out in the high school. That means that their class in the fall, if they take two classes in the fall and two classes in the spring, the cost of those two classes is twenty-two hundred dollars, and that's if we supply everything. We have a shared partnership where we even offset those costs with the high school. But if they were to fill out their Pell and get their Pell, they would end up with not only a fully paid for, but they would have an addition of almost a thousand dollars. So, the classes are paid for, and the student ends up with almost a thousand dollars extra to pay for books, fees, and all the other things that go with college, not just the tuition. So, we price-pointed the college to afford the benefit of the students. And we want to thank you guys because you guys have now approved us for a hundred and twenty-five thousand that go to support the campus. What we are now is, is we're not in the same situation we were four years ago. Back to the numbers, we had one student using the campus, and now we have almost two hundred, okay? So, what we are doing now is, we are going to, the campus now is what we call self-sustaining. The number of students using the campus pays for the operation of the campus. So, what we've done in Marlborough County, and what we do in Chesapeake County, and now what we can do in Dillon County is, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the county pays to help support the operation of the campus here, we're drilling into future growth of the campus. If you're not aware of it, we've now purchased twenty-six acres at that location. On top of that now, we have two proposals out for two different buildings that go on that site. One building is about twenty thousand square feet, and another one is sixty thousand square feet. Those two buildings will be focused on training people for the workforce of Dillon County. That means that both programs are open warehouse space to teach people in the logistics, the trucking industry, welding, and those areas. So, being able to have a self-sustaining campus now allows us to free up that middle-aged money that you guys have paid in a hundred and twenty-five thousand now, to be leveraged now to support growing the college in the service area. And that's what enrollment does for the college. The other thing helping is that we moved the college over to a business model budget, not a public sector budget. So, that's allowed us to drive the college a little bit different than is revenue-driven. There's one more flyer there I wanted to talk about, and that is that the dual enrollment. The dual enrollment program, which lottery, S E Wins, the Pell, and the middle-aged support for Dillon County, if the students would have graduated from high school, the exact students that took the class this year, if they would have graduated from high school and they would have came to N E T C or any of our sister institutions, and by the way, we're the chief of situation of all of our sister institutions in the region, they would have spent a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to take the same number of classes they took last year. And this year, they got it for free, okay? If they would have went to a public college, it was a four-year college, they would have paid four-hundred and twenty-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars for the same credits. If they would have been accepted at Clemson or USC, and they would have went there and had to pay for books, tuition, and room and board, they would have spent two, six-hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So, this program, the investment that you guys have done in Northeastern Technical College, has saved the taxpayers over four-hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in sending their kids to college for the same programs they can get right now while they're attending high school, or to your local campus that we have right here. So, as a college, we are committed to Dillon County. And some of the programs that we are offering this year at the Dillon campus will be the Harbor Freight Technical Training Program. It's actually at the Harbor Freight facility, and we train electrical and mechanical people to work at Harbor Freight on their support systems. We have an industrial plant maintenance program that we work with Purdue Chicken, it's offered at Purdue Chicken. Both companies have internships that are paid internships for students to go to work there while they're in the program. We have a fundamentals and warehousing logistics certificate that's offered in partnership with Harbor Freight. We have a certification in forklift, OSHA certification, in partnership with the high school and with Harbor Freight. We have, and we have started our C and A phlebotomy track and our nursing prep class, because we have an LPN program that will start here in Dillon in January. And we have the, the program is approved here for Jan, in January for a start date. We're targeting to start with twenty students, so if you know anybody that's interested in nursing, wants to do an LPN, please tell them to come see us. And, because we're looking for students in that area. And that's the offerings that'll be there, that onsite, including over a hundred and fifty distance learning and online courses that will be available for the students of Dillon County in the fall semester. So, as you can see, we are expanding our programs tremendously in the Dillon County. The one struggle that we have is space. Space is a problem. We do not have square footage to put equipment to do training. And, and that's what we're trying to address now with redirecting the hundred and twenty thousand dollars toward leveraging that into the community, so we can now build more space and have square footage to do more training for industry and the community. That's what's happened over the last three years, to get us to a point now to where we don't have to have that money for operations. We now have students to pay for the operation costs of the college, and now we can use that money to invest back in the college. So, you'll start seeing a lot of changes there in your slideshow. We gave you a proposal of what the two buildings will look like on the location. We've done a map of how the layout of the campus will be. It's open to the port, we made the campus open to the port. So, anywhere on campus, you walk out of our port, out of our buildings, you'll see the port out of, out of any of the buildings. And, and that's the design that we have there. And then in your packets, don't take my word, I gave you a whole bunch of students there in the very back, that are students or what's saying about us on social media, and you can hear from the students by reading right through that information. So, what I wanted to present was, we are growing. Our enrollments in Dillon County is growing tremendously. We are committed to do more and more in Dillon County. We've moved our financing around and through the support from you guys and the community. We now have student enrollments that are, that the campus is supported and self-supporting, and we'll be able to do more things in Dillon County. So, we're excited to be here. You guys are on our radar as an opportunity for Northeastern Technical College to grow. And we want to ensure you that we are working with all the local industry in the community to put training programs in, and we have met with them with internship programs, and our internship program is available to high school students once they turn eighteen. So, they can do the program in high school, and they can do, and they can work at the, at the local plant in an area that they're studying as an internship and take college credit at the same time. So, those are some of the highlights. There's a lot more going on behind the scenes, but those are the highlights of what Northeastern Technical College is doing in Dillon County. And I tell you, we can't do it without your support, we can't do it without school support, and we can't do it without the community support. Without those three things in place, we can't make it happen. And you guys have been a big factor in making this work for us. So, thank you very much.
I have a question for the taxpayers to you. Just out of curiosity, we would like to know, is it any kind of conflict with the tech center? What you, I know you've worked that out.
No, it's not. We complement everything that they do. We, we come in over the, over the top of them, and they review their curriculum. And then what they do is, they align it to the college credit, similar to, let's say, English, okay? We offer English one-on-one, which is a college-level course. Any high school student who has completed English one, English two, English three, can now choose to take English one-on-one with the college for college credit. We use their instructors. Matter of fact, if we use their instructor, it lowers the cost to only eighty-five dollars a credit hour. So, it lowers the cost to the student. And what that does then is, we credential their teacher to teach our course. And so there is no conflict there, and, and we arrange that, so it works really well together. The, we can complement any programs they offer. We've met extensively with the A-Tech Center. We have multiple programs that we can complement there. And a lot of the programming that we're doing is stuff they don't have to bring more opportunities to the community. So, we're really trying to work with them to make that happen for the community. So, where there is, there, there's overlap, but there's not duplication. We complement each other. Any other questions? Oh, come on, you guys are hardworking. Well, I thank you very much, and I appreciate all the support you guys give us. And you're going to start seeing a lot of things changing here in Dillon County this holiday. Okay, thank you.
Five D, Mike Tyler, picking up the phone.
Good evening, Councilman, Chairman. First want to start off by thanking you guys for allowing me to be here today in representation of Dillon County Economic Public Private Partnership Board. I also want to thank my members that showed up here today and support. And I thank you, I wanted to come and give you some kind of update of what we're doing, where we've been, where we're going, and what we need. So, but first off, I know we got some new council. And, and I don't know that the new council even is totally aware of what the partnership board does. And what we do, and I made a couple of notes, is what we, when inception of this board, we're charged to assist Dillon County, South Carolina government, in function of promoting and enhancing the economic growth of development of Dillon County. And generally, what that does is it lessens the burden of the government by becoming an integral part of a larger program in Dillon County government. And we're responsible for economic development, needs of Dillon County, and by working cooperatively with the county and the economic director, and helping promote that. And what, what are some of those charges, what are some of those challenges that we face? Well, we are, we solicit, we collect, we receive, we accumulate, we administer and disclosure funds. And we're, with our five-on-one C three status, we're able to even purchase properties. We've not gotten there yet, but we're getting there, we're getting there. And such man as will, in a discretion of board directors, most effectively, for such charitable purposes. We also, we are heavily into civic. We, we work directly in conjunction with Mr. Clay and, and his efforts. But we are focusing mainly on this board. I've been working heavily on trying to get existing businesses to expand. And Clay's, he's talking with the big boys, and, but he knows we're always there, right Clay? To assist in any way we can. So, but with that being said, we're also, Clay stole my, I mean, Dr. Wagner stole my thunder on workforce development, so he's explaining all that to you. So, but we're, we're heavy in supporting the college and, and their, and their achievements. And, and we have, we've been instrumental in helping connect the dots with the educators, and also with the college, and making sure that workforce development is in place. And also, we, we here to also help promote quality of life in Dillon County as well, in any way we can. So, that brings us today, is what am I here today for? I'm here today to ask for support from this board, from this council, and for our board members. By the way, these board members are sitting here, these board members are people and individuals that you guys appointed.
Who are your board members?
The, who are your board members? The county board, the public private partnership board members, could you please stand? These are, these are board members that's been appointed by this council. And, and by the way, I, they, they don't get paid a cent, but you know what? Their hearts into it. They, they really work hard in trying to promote industry in this county. And also, like I said, we focus real hard on existing business, the existing taxpayers in this. The, the ones that are paying taxes in this county. Now, with that being said, what am I here today for? I'm here to ask for support from you guys for these, these folks. Because I'm telling you, they're just like me. We're ordinary people, but I've seen extraordinary things come out of these folks, this group of people. I really have. They, they, they're eager, they want to see things continue on, on a good path. I think we're in just a sweet spot right now. We, we have opportunities that is unlimited, right here, right now. And it's due to the work of the council, it's due to the work for a lot of people, it's not one person. We're just another tool that not only Clay, the county, the council can use to help promote this. That's what we are. I know that since the inception of the board, we were, the council was committed to giving twenty-five thousand dollars a year to this board. And we haven't received any funds from the, from the council since May the twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, which is basically three years. And what we're here today to ask for is, you know, we, we have a lot of things happening. I know Clay, your phone was ringing off the hook as well, but we're actually in the middle of this board making two announcements. And we need funding to make some more things happen. And we're asking today if we could get at least two of those three years for funding to continue our work. We have, and these, 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 these expansions, these are expansions that we're talking about announcing. And we're hoping these announcements to come up in the next couple of weeks. We're working hard on them, one is very solid, one is seventy-five percent, one of them I would say would be ninety-eight percent. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Yes, sir.
Could you be a little more specific as to what are you doing with the funding that you get?
What we do with funding, our funding is, is used for, it's, we can, we use it for geotechnical borrowings, those kind of things, we're, we're used to invest to, to obviously corp businesses and try to help promote business. We, we use funding as you, I think most of you gentlemen have been to our industry appreciation day. That is, that is something that we fund, that we want to say to our existing businesses, there's huge taxpayers in this county, to say, hey, listen, we appreciate you being here, this is your day, enjoy this day. And we, and we do it also to educate not only the general public, but even council and myself as to what they're doing and, and how much that we appreciate them by bringing speakers in and, and giving us a future look. Because without, you know, without vision, people perish. So, that, and there are other things that we, some other things that we do is, is again, we're, we're looking at now, we're trying to get into Clay and I conjunctionally about investing in some, some grant writers to, to help write some grants and those sort of things. So, there's a lot of moving parts to it, Councilman, and, but it takes, it takes funding to do it. It, it does. Future progress, future progress are to finance a couple of master plans for development. We want to, we want to, I got, we have a vision of appointing some new board members for government affairs. We want a government affairs committee where we can get back on track and get in front of these roads out of the world, these, these kind of areas. And it takes demographics, it takes master plans, it takes money, it takes funding these projects that, and sometimes when these things come in, we're a avenue that can be used to not wait on decisions to be made that has to have three readings and those kind of things. Our, our status allows us to hire those people without those kind of governmental approvals to where we can maybe not lose a deal. And, and I know that, that's been, that's been challenges in, challenging in the past. And so we will, we're a conduit to be used for that. We need your support. And I'm asking today that we send a message to Dillon County. And the message I want to send to Dillon County is, we got seven councils, and it's on board with industry, that's on board with also expansions with existing businesses. And I, and I know that you guys are interested in that. And I know that you guys are interested in that. I've had opportunity to talk with every one of you on individual basis, and I know where your heart is. And I know that you want what's best for Dillon County. And the people who chief of point on this board, they know that as well. And we want, we need the support from you guys to continue to do what we do. Again, I've seen extraordinary things out of this board. And we're not done. And we're gonna continue to work harder. And we're gonna continue, but we're gonna continue to, we're gonna start showing progress that we've not shown in the past. So we need your help.
That's a good question. I know the last time we gave y'all twenty-five thousand, I think Hayward was the man that presented, Hayward Thompson, and we had council ask him, would y'all mind quarterly giving us a report on what you were doing and update? I said, when did everybody get the question?
Well, I cannot do anything about prior, what was prior, but I can tell you as chairman of this board, you will get that. You will get that. And you know what? That's accountability, and I'm all about accountability.
Mike, I'd like for you to, if you would, to take the time to present to the taxpayers of this county, if you can, the difference between private and public side of this board, because what he has brought up is completely different than what you're doing.
Right. Public and private side is, private side is the 501(c)(3) side. We've had, we have went out and we have also solicited to businesses, industries, and they gave us money. That's the only way we've been able to survive to the day. And they gave us money in support of us, they want to see things go to, whether it be the banking institutions, whether it be the harbor franks, and these folks have supported it. But I think we sending the wrong messages to these industries and existing businesses when we can't, when we can't support ourselves too. We want to be self-sustaining. We're just not there yet, and we need your guys' help to get there.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. First off, thank y'all for coming. We've got some good people on that board. Can you tell me how much money y'all have in y'all's account?
On the public side of the board, we have fourteen thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents.
About the private?
The private side, I don't know the exact number. Councilman Grass, I think it's, I, Mr. Addison?
Approximately thirty-three thousand.
Approximately thirty-three thousand.
Can you tell me what y'all spent some of this money on in the past as far as economic development and stuff, and what you might be wanting to use that fifty thousand dollars for?
Again, the, what we spent for on and in the past is promoting business. We even actually hired a grant writer at one time, we had him on staff. I think the young lady went on to do bigger and better things than what we were doing, but she was, she was doing a fantastic job. Those are some of the things we invested in. And I, and quite frankly, Councilman Grass, we have, we went through a year or two of stale, okay? And the reason we went through a year or two of stale is because there was just not stability. And without stability, it's hard to court industry and businesses in this county. Now, again, the things that we want to spend this money on, is again, it's master plans, we want to spend it also on, in assistance to Mr. Clay Young. Clay Young needs help. He needs help, and we're here to do that. And this is an avenue that we can use. And I don't want to speak for Clay, but I know that he's extremely busy, and I know that we have, we have capability on this board to assist that.
But y'all got work on P D right now?
Uh, that is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
I have a question in reference to that. One of the councilmen might have one of this. Was that in the past allocated in the budget for that? You mean to get any money?
I think it was in the budget.
Twenty-five thousand? It was in the budget. It wasn't in the budget.
And we're in the beginning, Doug Miller was the chairman that came and he actually got that started after the partnership. Mr. Cliver, was that money in the budget this year?
No, the money was not in the budget the prior year. And so when I was given the budget to work on, it wasn't there, and it just wasn't even visible as to, because I received the budget from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen to go off up to do the nineteen and twenty budget. And it was in either one of those budgets, so. And I didn't receive any requests to put it in the budget, so it wasn't put in there.
But if four councilmen vote today, I'm just clearing it up for the taxpayers, man. If four councilmen vote today to give him two years of his three years that he didn't get, we will go to what process to get his fifty thousand dollars? Because it won't be a budget for him.
We have to do a budget amendment. We have to do a budget amendment before we can approve that kind of money. We can't just say, we'll give it to you, something that's supposed to be in the budget.
This money's not for personal gain for none of those people. No, sir. We, it's actually our bylaws that we cannot have any kind of private personal gain to that money. There's no, there's no paid thing. There's something that needs to be paid. But, no, no, sir. I'll make it motion that we give it to you fifty thousand dollars.
I second it.
Is that a motion to amend the budget?
Amend the budget, give him the fifty thousand.
We have to have three readings on the public here to do that. Before we get to that point, can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes, sir.
I was here when we created public private partnership, I asked a man to put in. Can you tell me your industrial recruitment successes since public private? What have y'all recruited and brought to Dillon County?
We have not one project that we can credit our name to, county. But that's what we need to change, and that's what I'm here to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I be in line, and I know you probably aware you were sitting here, and you listen to what is on, I do understand the comment to hit the floor, but we do have a motion in the second on the floor.
Well, the question that you be, you talk about, because can we even, if the vote passes, it would be of no consequence, because you can't spend the money unless you go through the ordinance process.
Well, can we table this and have more discussion on it?
What discussion could we have that we hadn't already had before the taxpayer? To try to further our industry? That's what our county is about. That's all the, that's all the discussion we need.
If we're planning on getting, we're not figuring out where we're gonna get it from.
I make the motion that we give it to them so they can move forward.
I second that motion, and we have already discussed before.
I don't say if it's passed, then they have to go back and amend the budget.
But we have already had enough discussion here, we put off enough things with this council.
What do we, what do we need?
If the, if the motion passes, it's not gonna do anything, because you got to amend the budget to give the money.
Which means you have to do motions to pick money from other sources as well. We cannot change the total amount of money in the budget. That money is set.
But we can move from the general fund, can't we?
Not without.
No.
We should go through the channels.
Yeah. We have to know that from other sources that money's been made for.
What I suggest you do is if you want, if the, if there's enough interest in giving the money, and I think there is, we'll go through the process and amend the budget. You know, we do, it'll take three readings, it'll take a little while to, a little bit of time to get it done.
We understand there's a process. We do.
But that's what has to happen. I think even if the motion passes.
But let me ask you this, just amended the budget, you got to find out how to amend the budget, right?
Well, you got to still be, right.
I mean, you can't say I'm amended the budget, you still got to figure out.
It's gonna take time.
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, Mr. Grass, let me explain something to you, to the taxpayer. Let me use two examples here. The mayor of Blakeview came up here and asked for fifty-two thousand dollars. We had seven votes on this council to give him fifty-two thousand dollars before Mr. Cliver made the budget out. We voted unanimously to put a new roof on the Gibson building before the job falls in, to no avail before he made the budget. Now, what I don't want Mr. Tyler to do is for us councilmen to come up here and give him four votes if we do. And the same thing happened, that happened with the building over here, that the roof's gonna fall in, and the mayor of Blakeview has seen, how many months ago was that? Three, four months ago, chairman left. It's a serious thing.
No kidding, so get serious.
I mean, so, what I don't want the public to do, and Mr. Tyler to do, is to run into this same experience that we've had with this council before, taking votes to no avail. What are we doing up here for going to do that? Any comment on that?
Mr. Chairman, you do have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I didn't, I need to.
I'm not against it. I think we need to figure out what we're gonna do, is what I think. Being honest.
Having a budget in place, we need to know how to affect, we need to do a little more homework, you know, to make decisions, that's my point.
Mr. Berry is attorney for the county, and he told us what we need to do.
Just, you can call, you can call a workshop for those amendments, and you go from there. It would not take long to do, as long as you found the money and allocate it, that's all you have to do.
All you got to do. Councilman, I do want to tell you that we need the money, and regardless if you give it to us or not, we're not gonna stop. We're gonna continue to work, because we do care about Dillon County.
And we know that, and look here, we're not sitting up here against that, we just got to figure out, Mr. Scott can, he can just do it, but, I mean, we got to figure out what we got to do. I can't go find a fifty thousand dollar mile.
Mr. Scott saying let's not do what we've been doing in the past.
Thank you, all right. We appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, let me say this before we do close, and I do understand the process, but I got to say this, that economic development is the most important thing to Dillon County. People need jobs and people need good-paying jobs. And if we're gonna support anything, then we need to support economic development, because here's the thing, we can come up with money for any other thing. Right now, if we had to come up with fifty thousand dollars for something, we can come up with it. If we had to buy a new truck, we can come up with it. I do understand the budget process, but if we're gonna spend money like that, let's put it where it's gonna count at. And it's gonna count in trying to bring jobs to Dillon County, especially good-paying jobs and high pay.
Thank you, thank you, council, I appreciate your time. We appreciate your time.
Five E, landfill, Bacto, New England, black.
Bacto at the landfill, the engine expired on it. I don't have a formal quote from Blanche, but Charlie had called him and said it'd be approximately about eight thousand dollars for the engine at Bacto.
Is that eight thousand dollars put in the budget to get it?
Charlie has a line on for repair.
You got some money in the budget to get it, remember?
Yes.
Requires a motion.
Make a motion in your person.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Five F, recreational equipment.
We have one from the mayor and Dillon South Carolina Community Annual Festival, and it's gonna be August sixteenth, seventeenth, the nineteenth. And how much do you want to give?
I'm gonna give twenty.
James, this on the new?
This from Billy Adam. He's wanting donations for our community and its leadership here on the fourteen Okay, then we have, the family of the Johnson and Mahlins family reunion from Archie Scott. They're gonna have it on level seventeenth to nineteenth. Archie's giving a hundred dollars. Anybody else want to give? We have one from Wayne Green. We do this every year, it's two hundred dollars for the kids, and he'll be helping, so it's sponsoring a ring.
Two hundred dollars out of the hole?
Two hundred dollars each. Archie give two hundred. Two hundred.
What you said was for again?
Please help our kids by sponsoring a ring at this event. Sponsor will have their name and title placed out front of each ring. Their name will be announced throughout the day and help four kids compete for that day and also lunch. I said for two hundred dollars.
I give seventy-five. You gonna take it? Four in post? I would never mind you.
I don't remember.
I give a hundred, James.
James, give.
Two hundred.
James, you just have the new account.
Okay, then we have one from St. Mary AMA Church, and they're wanting celebration mortgage on the church, and they have a celebration on July the twenty-eighth.
That's who?
St. Mary AMA Church.
Where's that?
It's Mary.
Mary.
Yeah, this is a Marion County facility, just so you know.
Let me give a fifty. Let me just make it clear that she is a Dillon County resident and a Dillon County taxpayer. She just happened to pastor that church. You know who she is? Eva Davis. Who is it, Doc? Eva Davis.
Then the last one is Dillon Middle School Walk-It Band, they're wanting money for their six, seven, eight players.
Give her a hundred. For the band? I'll be grateful. Boy, you get, you get the whip. I give a fifty. Twenty-five. You oughta get mine, right, James?
See, if this part, Jason, I'll just, I'll just cut, um, half. Hundred. That's not, okay, that's all. Let me out.
All of them? Requires a motion to make.
Yeah, motion to make.
Got a motion in a second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Six, old business. A, Marble Electric Agreement.
This, well, this is about the agreement that Clay mentioned last month with, uh, Marble Development Team there. They've given Dillon County the money to hire this marketing group. Um, I have reviewed the, the agreement, and it's in your packet, and as you recall, last meeting, we said we'd bring the agreement back to you so you can see it before you voted to spend the money. I don't see, I mean, there's nothing in it that gives me any cause for concern, except that Dillon County is not a signatory to the agreement, so we'll ask them to be at, that we be added as well, obviously to the agreement. Other than that, it'll remain, and, and they do discuss in the agreement itself that it's with Dillon County and Marble Development Team. They just didn't have us down signing it.
But we need to sign.
Right. We need to sign. That, that way they'll be obligated to us as well. And it'll be with a limit of twenty-eight thousand, twenty-seven, seven ninety-nine, uh, for us, the, uh, the project.
Which is a part of the seventy thousand they gave us, and we've been forwarded to go for the EDA grant. We're also gonna use this information to help us do the EDA grant, too. We're gonna use this to supplement that grant with, through the COG, since some of y'all members are on the county government, and, uh, so it'll be kind of work from end to end on the agreement. The information they give us can basically help us with the EDA grant, if that makes sense. It won't be two seventy, please. And that leaves us, like I said, seventy thousand they gave us. Seventy thousand, forty goes to the EDA grant for the Fort Starting Masterclass Study, and twenty seven, like Adam said, twenty-seven, seven ninety, to go fund this study, and that leaves us, I wouldn't say over two thousand dollars to use for something else, something else we can develop.
Requires a motion. Need a motion to improve the agreement? Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven, financial.
Yeah, this is, uh, as of July the twenty-third, um, in our general fund account, we got three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Accounts payables to come out of that is two million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine sixty-four, which leaves us a available balance to be able to spend the million, three hundred and five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Um, could you explain to, to the council, um, where we are in comparison to last year at this date?
Uh, we've tracked a little bit better. Last year was an awful year, as far as time, trying to get through. But we all run a little bit better this year than we were previous year.
Bit better, I mean, how much in numbers?
Um, we're probably around three hundred, four hundred thousand.
Eight, administrative report.
All right. Two very brief things. First of all, um, I wanna make sure that we're clear. Uh, Mr. Counsel, um, our, our call meeting, we had a public notice that was sent out for August the second. At what time did you do it?
Ten.
At ten. I know there's some discussion back and forth whether it's the second or the eighth, but I wanna make it very clear, it's August second, that Friday, and that's public.
This Friday.
Next Friday.
Thanks, Father.
Next Friday, August second.
Call me.
Yes. Next Friday. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. Right. Before we go to Hillhead. And the only other thing I wanted to mention to you before I get asked a question. Um, we do have the elevator in the city county building scheduled to be, um, fixed on August the fifth. That's, that's the scheduled date. Now, we have a plan B that we've established, um, a firm out of Myrtle Beach, that, um, we haven't gotten a quote from, any kind of estimates, but if that falls through, we're not gonna keep waiting, keep waiting on them. Um, we're gonna go ahead and, and, and get that done. Any questions about that?
Yes, well, we're able to recruit the money that we put up early on, two months ago.
No, that, that eight thousand is toward the parks that they're, that they're purchasing, right, Richard?
Yeah, that's the Otis. The Otis one that has, has the schedule, maybe, August fifth.
That is the Otis. And, one, one other thing, real quick. Um, also, some people have asked about the playground equipment at the park in Newtown that was ordered, and that, that, that's scheduled to be, I was only given the first or second week of August as well. So, that money was, and that's before I got here, and that was through Shaker Foundation, I believe it was.
Shaker Foundation.
They, they gave that money, and, um, and so we did make the order for that equipment, and it's scheduled to be there in August, uh, first, second week of August. So, I just wanna give everybody update about that as well.
Can I talk with you a while back about the Riverdale Park, about the equipment, and then?
Yeah, we, um, we spoke with that same company, and that company, they don't have anything within my budget, within, under five thousand, um, that I could even put out there to, to begin with, and we haven't found anything to use that, that is, you know, of any type of quality. So, we haven't forgotten about it, but that has to go through a process. We have to get that approved, um, to the council, if we're gonna do that. Uh, and that has to go through Parks and Recreation. Too much money having that budget for, for that kind of thing, so.
Can you get some grant money to buy a quarter?
Um, yeah, I mean, I said before, we, we do need to focus a little more on grant writing. We need to, we need to get some of these grants. We need to make sure, if we need to get someone that can write grants and, and get paid through commission, or we have to hire someone. But we need to look at getting grants, because there are a lot of counties that have a lot less budget than we do, but they have seen a lot more things for the general public. So, we, grants is a, a good way to do that, and I've said it for a while, so I'll be glad to entertain any suggestions as far as grants are concerned. Yes, sir.
I would like this for you, if, you know, if you're in mind, to get in touch with, you know, your delegation, Representative Hayes, and Chip Meads, and this, and see if they got any park grant money for park preparations.
I'll be sure to do that.
Riverdale Park out there needs some, it's, it's old, and they ain't much out there. When the kids come out, they play on what's out there, but certainly we need to try to do something.
I'll make sure to get in touch with them and see if that, what happens as far as that is concerned. Any other questions, everybody? Yes, sir.
Did they update on the gravel, on the roads?
Yes, uh, there is an update on that. Um, that has been, that has been approved. We did get the, the, the dump trucks fixed, and we're just waiting on the purchase. Um, we were gonna wait for, Marion County's, they're doing the same exact program, and they're a year, a couple of years ahead of us with that, and so instead of buying without having someone to look at that's already done it successfully, they're gonna make another purchase, and how long is that supposed to be?
They said they can start August. Marion County-
Right.
They might have to, right, come a while, so they do.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with them, or at least see how they're doing, what they're doing as far as the purchasing, and what they're doing to lay the rocks, the gravel, and then we're gonna go from that, because they, um, we have a lot of other counties we can ask for assistance, but Marion County is right here, so we have the same kind of dirt, same kind of landscaping, uh, pretty much, so we're gonna go by what they've been doing. And, and it's been pretty simple for them, so we're gonna do the same thing. That's all we're waiting on. Have you, another couple of weeks. Uh, I did ask, uh, to get some roads from, I got a few from some people, um, but I need to get, uh, from, from the council members, a listing of some shorter, this is the first time we're doing it, and we're gonna get some of the shorter roads, uh, the first time.
You mean, the rough roads, I mean, the, the rough roads are just-
No, we need roads that are, that are impassable, um, from emergency vehicles whenever it rains. You know, we haven't had such a bad rain, rains this summer. We had a few, but nothing that's gonna really affect the greater the roads, but, um, that doesn't mean it's not gonna happen real soon, so we need roads that are impossible for emergency vehicles to get down on when it gets wet. Roads that people just can't get to from work to the store. If it's a little rough, we can hit that the next time possible, but we want roads that are just impassable.
Any questions?
All right.
That it? Thank you. Nine, ordinance reading. A, second reading. An ordinance to realign a county road formerly a part of quality drive and known as industrial park drive to acquire the necessary right of way for the realignment, convey all county interest in portions of the whole right of way, and other matters pertaining thereto. Requires a motion. Motion in a second. Second motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? B, first reading. Authorizing the insurance and sale of not exceeding one hundred thousand general obligation bond, one, excuse me, one million general obligation bond in one or more series of Dillon County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bonds, authorizing the chairman of county council and county administrator to determine certain matter. Requires a motion.
Make that motion.
Out of motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? C, first reading. An ordinance to convey zero point three five two acre, more or less, which is a portion of tax amount, one oh seven dash zero, zero, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, two, two, to the South Carolina Department of Transportation, to grant permission for construction and other work on S forty-five Lester Road and other matters pertaining thereto.
Just to clarify what this, this will be by title only for this reading. Um, you all are aware of the bridge construction on Lester, this is on Lester Road, where, where we have some property down there, where the boat landing and all that. The, the highway department, um, is going to purchase, it's just over a third of an acre from Dillon County, because they're, they're having to relocate the, the entrance ways and to provide room for their slopes that they need. Um, and that, it'll be in the final, uh, here it is. It'll be for one thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. But it's, it'll be for a public purpose, so, you know, the money, the full motion be available for second reading. And, and that's call meeting, or that's regular meeting, whenever you want.
Requires a motion. Motion, do the first, do the timeline.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Ten, resolution. A, a resolution designating improvement spectrum courts LLC as a sponsor affiliate in satisfaction of the requirements of Title Twelve, Chapter Forty-four of the South Carolina Code, so as to allow the sponsor affiliate to qualify for benefits pursuant to the fee and lieu, the levied liram taxes arrangement between Golden Spectrum LLC, Hirsch Holdings LLC, Dillon County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, all it does is basically, it's, it's the company allowed, uh, as spectrum courts, and they want to be able to get the same fee and lieu arrangements, should, because all three of them are basically the same company, but just different holding companies, so all three of them would qualify under the same fee, but so technically you're not giving them anything, anything additional to what they already got, so Golden Spectrum and Hirsch is, is the same as spectrum courts, so.
Requires a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? B, relating to the declaration of intent by Dillon County, South Carolina, to reimburse certain expenditure made prior to the assurance of federally, federally taxed exempt general obligation bonds or other obligations by the county. Requires a motion.
I make that motion.
Motion, need a second.
I said it.
Motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Eleven, appointments. A, accommodation tax committee addition, Sam Steviegrass, with J.W. Payton. We need to do all these in one, or do each one separate? Each one separate? Requires a motion.
Make that motion yourself, Mr. Bailey.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? B, planning commission, District One, James Count.
Don't have no one at this time.
Planning commission, District Three, Arthur Scott.
I'm motioning that we, uh, appoint Mr. James Lanning. Planning commission. You let Sir with the planning commission.
All right. Requires a motion.
I make that motion that we accept Mr. James Lanning.
No move, I second.
Motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? D, planning commission, District Five, Harold Booth. Twelve, executive session, economic development, no matter, front of crab, front of bedding, contractual.